Josefina Rodriguez.
I must have been hoot because I haven't been there, but my wife's in the car around this time. It's like, we'll just park it all night. That's why.
Yeah. Well, let's see.
You don't want to be a commuter.
Yeah, oh, well, that. I thought I'd leave that, yes.
Twenty million people are trying to get home at exactly the same time.
Yeah, right, right.
Good evening. My name is Josefina Rodriguez.
Could you speak more close to the microphone?
Okay. Good evening. My name is Josefina Rodriguez and I'm a member of the Inquilinos Unidos. And I'm here to demand a rollback on rent. The reason is, a lot of issues have been discussed over here, but no one has discussed one of the most important reasons why the events, the Skyway events, are affecting our communities, our neighborhoods, our friends, our families, and why people that cannot afford to pay this rent are being homeless. Homeless is something that people in a big city like this should be, have to do it. Because they cannot pay the rent, they become aware that they have to do something about. One of the reasons that I'm here is because, thank God, I have nothing to worry about because since we have a fixed income and we, but we see people that are suffering so much in our neighborhood and people that have to move away. And we are losing a lot of people concerning this issue. All the issues that were said over here, they're valuable because everybody have personal statements. However, that's the reason we demand a rollback on our rent.
Thank you.
Roll back the rent.
Al Brown.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. My name is Al Brown. I'm a tenant of a rent stabilized apartment and a member of the Fifth Avenue Committee. All the tenants I have spoken to so far, all the tenant advocates and all the tenant representatives are calling on our new rent guideline board for a rent rollback. I am here in wholehearted support of this demand. The facts for tenants like me continue to be depressingly familiar. Year-on-year increase in rents, year-on-year increase in loss of rent stabilized apartments, where there's an obvious and growing need for them, and year-on-year record increase in homelessness. These wrongs need to be put right. The only constant in this picture with rent stabilized apartments is not stability, but instability and deterioration. We, the existing rent stabilized tenants, are all facing the same pressures that have forced so many of our neighbors to be displaced and priced out of their apartments, no longer able to survive in a place where they have long called home. These persons were once just like us, trying to make ends meet and support themselves and their families in our city. Some of our tenants are doomed to soon become part of those statistics of deterioration, instability, and homelessness. We recognize that you, the chairman and members of this board, have been offered and have accepted the power, the authority, and the responsibility in deciding what will become of us rent stabilized tenant at least this next year. Last year, the previous board looked at the data and consequently took an important step, a rent freeze. For this, we are extremely grateful. This year, we expect the present board to fulfill its obligation to meet its community, look at the data too, and take the next vital step, meet the crying needs of the tenants.
Mr. Brown, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to hold you two or two minutes. We have a lot of people backed up here.
By instituting a rent rollback. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. William Hamza.
Okay, I'll make it quick. Okay, members of the board, my name is William Hamza John. I'm here today not only as a tenant advocate and tenant organizer, but also as a rent stabilized tenant myself. As a tenant advocate and organizer for the Fifth Avenue Committee, I assist over 180 tenants annually and currently have an active caseload of over 70 tenants. The bulk of my work centering around eviction prevention and helping tenants against landlord harassment. I work with tenants from Park Slope, Gowanus, Sunset Park, Prospect Park, Boring, you name it. As you can imagine, I see a lot of leases. I'm here today on behalf of not only myself as a rent stabilized tenant, but also on behalf of all the Brooklyn tenants that I work with to demand a rent rollback. I see the effects of high rent all the time in the work that I do. I work with elderly tenants on screen, for example, who despite having a rent freeze, have a frozen rent that is still too high for them to afford. I see working-class tenants come to me every day, no longer able to afford their rent, their rent stabilized apartment due to historically inflated rents, rental increases occurring in some of the most difficult economic times in the country. For example, 2009 alone, a two-year lease increase was set at 8.5%, right in the middle of the grave recession. And in 2013, barely out of the grave recession, we saw an increase of 7.75% on the two-year lease. And quite frankly, last year's rent freeze was partly compared to the damage historic rent increases have done to working-class communities in this city. Salary increases don't even go as high as 8%, not for individuals like me with college degrees, and certainly not for working-class folks. High rent increases are difficult for me and also force me to cut corners in my daily expenses, so can you imagine a low-income family? High rent increases are currently displacing tenants. That's a fact. As a born-and-born New Yorker from Bushwick, I don't recognize the Bushwick of my youth, nor can I move back to Bushwick because of the high rent increases. Add the fact that rent stabilization laws allow landlords to have a 20% increases. High rents. Quite frankly, I'm tired of seeing tenants displaced, I'm tired of seeing evictions in housing court, and I'm tired of negotiating move-out dates for tenants as they're crying right next to me in housing court. Thank you.
I have a question. We have a question. Thank you, William, for your testimony.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mary.
Can you just talk a little bit of those 70 eviction cases that you're currently working on? Are they for rent increases or?
They're actually not just eviction cases, they're a mixture of eviction, tenant harassment, tenant overcharge, et cetera. Out of the many eviction cases, however, I mean, it's for many reasons, a lot of them are for non-payment, which again, because of the very high rents in rent stabilized apartments, I've seen leases of about 1,600 and up, which quite frankly, to most working-class tenants, they can't afford that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers will be Gladys Pugia, Maria Cortez, and Neves Medina.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. My name is Gladys Pugia. I'm from, I live in 1406 Putnam Avenue in the Brookshire area, and I'm a paralegal and member of Midtown Road, New York. I'm here again, and I'm gonna keep coming back every single year until this rent stabilizer stops. Stop these rent increases. Like I said before, I'm trying as much as I can to pay my rent. I haven't had a salary increase for 11 years, and I'm still struggling. Now, like I say, I hear somebody else saying, struggling to pay my rent, buy my medicine, buy food, and now I got my two children back in my apartment because they can't afford it to pay any rent outside. Only one is lasting outside. I'm expecting her not to come back, but I hope she keeps holding my apartment. But this is ridiculous, and I'm saying it's ridiculous and crazy because I'm, as a city worker, I'm working hard enough, trying to make it in this city, in my neighborhood, which is Brookshire area, which the gentrification has done a lot of damage. And now we only surviving two Latino families in this, in this three building that is owner bought. And those rents are ridiculous. The same apartment, only that he missed just some modifications, and then the rent is at 2,800. The same apartment that I have, I'm paying 1,300. So my rent is keep coming higher. Like I said, right now, I'm struggling to pay this rent. I'm waiting for the court letter that he will be sending me because I haven't paid the rent. He only waits for two rents to really send you to court. So tell me about it. Now, where I'm gonna get all this money to pay this man? And telling me that they do repairs? They don't. I'm still waiting for the repairs for two years ago, and they still haven't done it. He just do a little thing like that with his hand, and that's it, he's done. Inspector's can't say, oh, they did it. Yeah, paint it all over on top of the wall, paint it all over, just cover a little hole.
I'm sorry, your trunks up. Thank you for your testimony.
Please, rent rollback.
Maria Cortez.
Hi, good evening. Good night, whatever. My name is Maria Cortez, and back again, I think the third, fourth time I forgot. And a member of Midtown Road, New York. I live at 870 Beaufort Avenue, borderline of Beaufort-Stuyvesant on Williamsburg. And I live in a stabilized rent apartment, not my nightmare, start 2001. My building went twice in foreclosure. I see only, I see three families want to live already. So I said, what happened? I went to court, the court ordered to the landlords, they want rent, increased rent, right? But when they go to the court, they don't do nothing. They don't respect the law. I'm sorry to say that, but in my case, in a lot of cases, I see that. The judge give out order to the landlords, and they don't make the repairs. Like my friend said, sloppy job, I job, I call that, because I still living in that way. To now, they're using, how you call, cooperation. Who is the landlord? I don't know who's my landlord. One give an order, other one give the other order, and really, I don't know. I live, I am a CNA, I'm retirement, and I still working because I can't afford to pay my rent, either with my husband that is on the retirement. Please, like all the time, I, I tell you and I pray to you, roll up the rent. No me, we have a lot of, I don't have no neighbor, I don't have nobody around, okay? Because everybody have to go. Everybody have to go because the increase in the rent. Centrification are killing us. Please, help us. We need help of you, and I know that you do it. Roll up the rent, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Neves Medina. I just want to make an announcement that registration to speak will close at 8 o'clock. If you haven't registered and you want to speak, you need to go outside and sign up to speak. Is Neves Medina here? Yes, apparently. Do you need the interpreter? So it's gonna be a total of four minutes with the interpretation.
Mi nombre es Neves Medina. Buenas noches, perdón. Mi nombre es Neves Medina. Soy miembro de Midtown Road. Acabo de venir de la corte porque de las noticias de Landon donde yo vivo, yo soy una persona depresiva pero que a la gente se equivoca con la persona que tiene problema. Yo tengo problemas emocionales pero yo, yo tengo conciencia.
My name is Neves Medina. I'm a member of Midtown Road, New York. I'm coming from the court right now due to the injustices from my landlord. I'm a depressive person, but even though I suffer from depression, people make mistakes and assumptions with people with depression. Even though I'm, I suffer from this, I have a conscience, conscience?
Vengo desde la corte y por lo menos la jueza fue bien benevolente y se dio cuenta de que estaban haciendo fraude conmigo. El problema es que, que el landon no pasa la infección de 18, no la pasa. Entonces, yo cogí un insecto tengo metido en mi cuerpo. ¿Cómo se sentirían ustedes si le dicen que su cuerpo va de un insecto? ¿Cómo se sentirían? Pues así no me sentí yo, con una depresión bien grande.
I'm coming from the court. Thankfully, the judge was very benevolent with me when she realized that they were committing fraud with me. The landlord, my landlord, does not pass Section 8 inspection. He does not pass it. What's going on with me? I have an insect in my body. There's an, there's an insect in my body. How would you feel if that happened to you? Of course, you would feel depressed.
Entonces, me llevo para la corte para sacarme del apartamento para, para, para cubrirse. Tú sabes de, 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 de lo que crea que yo pueda hacer, pero eso no fueron mis intenciones nunca. Pero ahora, como él me ha demostrado que es una persona inconsciente, yo necesito que ustedes me apoyen y me ayuden honestamente porque yo no quiero que la otra gente le pase lo que estoy pasando hoy.
Okay, let me interrupt you so we can get the interpretation, please. So he took me out of the, he took me to court to try to take me out of the apartment to try to cover himself from whatever it is that he thought I might do, but that was never my intention. But now, he has shown me that he is a person with no conscience. So I wanted to help me so that, because I don't want anyone else to go through what I'm going through.
No pasa la infección porque no arregla. Es inhumano porque yo, yo le metía más, yo limpiaba, limpio, 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 creyendo que era sucio y era amo, y se me ha metido en el cuerpo. Ahora me quiere sacar a las 8 de la mañana, pero la jueza le propuso su sitio. Son tan fraude que me sacaron...
So he doesn't pass the inspection because he doesn't fix anything. It's actually inhumane. You know, I'm constantly cleaning, and I clean, and I clean, and I clean, and it's actually mold, and now it's in my body, so he's trying to kick me out of my building.
Ahora me quiere sacar, pero no es la culpa mía de que no pasa la infección. Honestamente, yo no quiero que la otra gente le pase eso. Yo soy una persona enferma que tomo medicación, y yo he estado muy mal.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your time is up. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Ha llegado su tiempo.
So he wants to kick me out of the apartment, but it's not my fault that he doesn't pass the inspection. I really honestly don't want anybody else to be in this situation. I'm a sick person who takes medicine.
Gracias a Midtown Road que me ha dado apoyo inmensamente, y a ustedes les pido de favor que cualquier mujer sola que vean ayudenla. Yo tengo mi niña que vino de mes, yo tengo diecisiete años ahí, y tengo vergüenza.
I want to thank Midtown Road, New York for all the support, and to all of you, I want to tell you, if you see a lonely woman, you should help her and support her. I have my daughter who came here very little. I have been living here for 17 years, and I feel very embarrassed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No oportunidad para otra.
Thank you.
Su papel es, señor. The next three speakers will be Howard Rop, Rodrigo Castillo, and Francisco Exlaco Robles. Howard Rop?
Yeah. On my way here today, I came across a sign. Imagine being forced out of your home. Imagine your children having to witness it. Sad to say, this happens to be the reality. On the floor of the building in which I live, tenants are forced to move out. They live in a one-bedroom apartment for which they are paying $3,500 a month in rent. They were just informed that if they want to stay there, they'll have to pay $800 more each month. Is this unusual? Is this unique? Hardly. The very same scenario took place last year in that very same one-bedroom apartment. They moved out too. Indeed, we are in a rent crisis, which unfortunately, not all the politicians comprehend or care to confront. When senior citizens living on fixed incomes must make life choices of paying the rent or buying life-sustaining medication or food to keep them going one more day, we are betraying the very people who have built our great city. They have paid their dues, but now they cannot rub their shekels together to pay their rent. Well, look into the eyes of the hungry children whose family cannot feed them because the rent increase just took the food out of their mouths and ate it. The rent guideline board is to be praised for its courage in giving us a first-time rent increase last year and keeping many grateful citizens in their homes. Now we look to all of you to roll back the rent! Roll back the rent! Roll back the rent!
Thank you. Is Rodrigo Castillo here?
He was fired up, and ain't gonna take it no more.
Francisco, I'm sorry, Francisca Exlaco Robles? Are you here? All right. Lucia Lopez?
Vivo en el 4, en el 484 60th Street, apartamento 12R, en Sunset Park, Brooklyn. Soy parte del grupo "Becinos Ayudando a Vecinos", que demasiado me han ayudado.
My name is Lucia Lopez, and I live at 484 60th Street, apartment 2R, in Sunset Park, Brooklyn, and I'm a part of the group "Neighbors Helping Neighbors" who have helped me a lot.
Vivo en el apartamento de renta estabilizada desde 1993, con mi familia. A pesar de que he vivido mucho en los últimos dos años, el nuevo casero me... El nuevo casero quería que me saliera, que me fuera, y vacío el edificio. Y cuando pedí reparaciones, me destruyó la mitad de apartamento. El apartamento lo dejó en condiciones que no se podía vivir. Lo compuso después de varios meses, pero me cortó el gas, la calefacción, el agua. Dos semanas no tuve agua, que es dos semanas sin agua, agua caliente y agua fría. Yo iba al baño a los vecindarios.
I live in a rent stabilized apartment since 1993 with my family. Despite the fact that we have lived there for long, in the last two years, the new landlord wanted me to leave and emptied the building. When I asked him for repairs, he destroyed half of my apartment. He left it in conditions under which we could not live. He fixed it after a few months, but then he cut my gas and heat and the hot water. I was without water for months, for three months.
HPD lo esforzó después de muchas multas. No le importó que tuviera niños. Es por eso que todos los acosos que yo les pido una devolución de renta. Estos dueños son ricos y no les importa las multas. Y el acoso los quiere sacar.
Okay, let's get the interpretation, and then, I'm sorry, your time is up. I took him to court, oh, sorry, HPD forced, forced him after many, after many fees, but he didn't care that we had, that we had children. This is why, it is, it is for this reason and for the many abuses that I ask you for a rent rollback. These landlords and owners are rich, and they don't care about the fees, and through their abuse, they want to take us out.
The next three speakers will be Lincoln Eklis, Lynn Thompson, and Johanna Clearfield. Lincoln Eklis.
I'd like to remind the board that small landlords, such as myself, exist. I'm in Crown Heights, which is ground zero for gentrification in Brooklyn. This year, this year, our costs have gone up for property tax by 25% alone. Water is over 2%. Water is over 2% increase. In 2009, water went up over 15%. These costs exceed from our property over 60% of our overall revenue. Yeah, keep going. Tenants are the basis of our business. They're our customers. Having an adversarial relationship with them is non-productive.
Can you just speak up a little bit more?
Sorry? Sure. Not used to speaking on the mic. But it is, if the tenants rightly want some kind of adjustment, abatement, or reduction, I say fine, but first, roll back our costs. I'm a small landlord, I'm treading water. Some of our units are below water. They're being subsidized by other tenants. That's wrong. This adversarial relationship is wrong. We're a small, small business and most of this back and forth is about large landlords that have hundreds of units. We all have to deal with that.
Thank you, Mr. Eckless. Lynn Thompson?
Hello, my name is Lyric Thompson. Sorry. It's okay, I've been called worse, especially by my landlord. But then again, this is what happens when you find out that your landlord has committed what I call a deceptive business practice. We have some serious issues with the rent stabilization system in our city. We have landlords that lie to DHCR. We have landlords that don't bother to register at all, like mine. For five years, he collected a 421A tax abatement without finishing construction on the building or even registering the apartments with DHCR. So last summer, when he wanted to raise everyone's rent to 2,500 because we're gentrifying and, you know, we have to have skinny jean people with glitter beards come in and take over our neighborhood, that's when I started looking into the situation and I realized, oi, we're rent stabilized. That started an incredibly difficult, daunting, and unfair situation for not only me, but every tenant of this man's buildings. I found eleven so far, all rents stabilized, yet not one tenant knows that their rent's stabilized. Until we can ensure that every single rent-stabilized building in my city is properly registered, properly with the proper rent, and up to basic safety standard code, we should not allow increases. Now, I've heard landlords in this room talk about their costs. Woe to the republic. Is there any other business that we allow for people to engage in in our city where you're allowed to hawk unsafe, below basic safety standard? Where? Only housing. You tell us to go to housing court, yet when you do, you're put on a blacklist and effectively, your First Amendment right has been frustrated. And why? Because a landlord doesn't want to abide by the Rent Stabilization Code or the multiple-dwelling laws? If you are not worthy or cannot afford to have a business in my city, then find something else to do. I most certainly cannot open a restaurant and sell rat on a stick because I find the price of chicken too much to bear. Yet that is exactly what my city expects, not only myself, but every tenant and citizen in this city to endure.
I'm sorry, Ms. Thompson, your time is up. Thank you. Thank you. Roll back the rent. Johanna Clearfield?
Hi. Um, who do I give, this is my testimony, who do I give it to at the end? Just give this to you, okay?
Out in the front.
Out in the front, okay. So it's like 400 pages of sad, sad story. So I can't go through that because I'm gonna try to keep on time. My entire, I was dragged to New York against my will. My mother got a job here. We moved to 19th and 3rd in a Mitchell Lama apartment and I honestly believe that because of the fine print of the Mitchell Lama regulation that it expired and that my mother didn't know would expire, that it actually killed my mother. Because my mother lost her apartment there and right after that, there was a downward spiral where she ended up just dying a few years later. And I honestly believe that Mitchell Lama killed, the reversal of Mitchell Lama killed my mother. She didn't have an apartment, her husband had died, she had nowhere to live. Now, here's her daughter. I found that living in New York on your own, you're punished. You're punished if you're not with someone. I'm bisexual, right? Everyone's having LGBT marriage. Everybody, everybody and their brother has someone. I haven't been with anyone in 10 fucking years. I should have, pardon my French, I should have a 50% more right likelihood of being with someone. And why do I want to be with someone? Because of the rent. It's not even about me, you know? If you're in New York and you're single, you can't afford to live on your own. So I'm 55 years old with a 30-year-old roommate who I hate, who is walking around my apartment in his friggin' boxer shorts and I can't argue because he's not even a child where you get the payback that he goes to college and supports you. He's just a thing that you just look forward to that one day where you get the 700 bucks, which then pays my car, which is about to be repossessed. So I look at him and see my Toyota, that's the one, you know? And I have a car because I do volunteer animal rescue work. And I'm sure that all of these agencies really are gonna give me money and help me out because I'm rent poor, because I'm paying for programs that I support for abandoned animals. They just find that amusing. So I'm just here to say, first of all, that I wanted to represent that you can be educated, you can be white, and you could be living from paycheck to paycheck and not be able to make your rent. This is not a color issue. I'm in your apartment now, I moved in specifically because they said it was rent stabilized. I put here, on here, the rider, the rent stabilization rider is here. I represent it, you know, up front. It says in big letters, "Rent stabilized." What's at the bottom? That upon renewal, it can go back to quote-unquote "legal rent." And what's legal rent? It's anybody's opinion. And in this apartment, I got in at a rent that was 1,500 and its legal rent is 3,500. I'm in court now, I'm in court now, paying with the extra thousands that I have in my back-ripped pocket, I'm paying a lawyer the money that I would be paying for my rent to try to fight this, because I'm not moving.
Sorry, your time's up.
No problem, have a great day.
The next three speakers are Donna Mossman, Thomas Williams, and Lorraine Delamore. Who's first?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. I'm back again.
My name is Donna Mossman and I am one of the founding members of the Crown Heights Tenant Union. Crown Heights is ground zero for gentrification. I've lived there for 38 years. My question to you is, how much money is enough? Developers purchase a building for $15 million, yet they charge tenants a $40 late fee. How much money is enough? Developers purchase another building for $50 million, yet they force tenants into housing court, then charge the tenants several hundred dollars in court fees. How much money is enough? They renovate the new apartments where longstanding tenants have been pushed out, bought out, and harassed out. The new apartments are filling their pockets with $2,500 a month in rent or more. How much money is enough? The longstanding tenants who choose to stay and fight against being pushed out, bought out, and harassed out are still waiting for repairs. How much money is enough? Tenants who receive assistance from state, federal, and city agencies are no longer welcome to live where they have lived for years. They and our senior citizens are one of the most vulnerable groups of tenants who are being pushed out and harassed out, but not bought out. How much money is enough? Lest we forget, these are the tacked-on and jacked-up fees that will help them buy another building. How much money is enough? Thank you. Thank you.
Thomas Williams?
Good evening, distinguished members of the board. Glad to be back again this year. Uh, good evening, my name is Thomas Williams and I am a tenant leader and a member of the Flatbush Tenant Coalition. I live at 538 East 23rd Street, owned by Sham Co., which is Sham Co. Sham Co. is a predatory equity landlord. I am proud to be a member of the Coalition because it helps tenants who are being displaced by landlords that don't have a conscience when it comes to their tenants. Landlords throw tenants with every loophole in the book and they are their own. Late fees, lawyer fees, cleaning fees, that's just the name of the theory. We are asking this board to bring some God-given common sense to this board for tenants who are less fortunate than their landlords who are making a lot of money off our backs with vacancy bonuses of 20%, MCI's, IA's, that never come off of your rent as long as you live in the apartment and longer. These are just, these are just three of the many loopholes that the landlord uses with tenants who ought to make less than $18,000 per year for a whole family. We are being pushed out physically and otherwise by landlords and their staff and supers. Most times, we don't get our apartments fixed. They try everything to focus us out, to force us out. Landlords go as far as they do to do damage to their own building by not fixing our apartments just to get more money in the end. We ask you, the board, give tenants the chance to stay in their apartments with their families by willing to look back or even we would be homeless without families in the streets. Uh, how will, how will you live with this on your conscience if you don't roll back the rent? You've heard the many true sad, sad stories of how tenants can eat or buy clothes for their children. Landlords are making a fortune every year for years, but they...
Ms. Williams, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you. Roll back the rent! Roll back the rent! Roll back the rent!
Lorraine Delamore?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. My name is Lorraine Delamore and I'm a proud member of the Flatbush Tenant Coalition. I live at 5960 East 22nd Street, Brooklyn. My landlord is Joseph Litman and Coney Realty, a big predatory equity corporation. I have lived in my building for over 15 years. I have lived through no heat and hot water in the winters, moles, falling ceilings, rats, roaches, floors caving into the basement due to leaks in the radiators. After many protests in front of the landlord's home and having the head of HPD come to our building to talk about the hundreds of violations and what could be done to improve the living situation. After a long and hard fight for years and years, the landlord finally did the repairs, only for us to be slapped with an MCI, increase of $180 per month for a one-bedroom and $240 for a two-bedroom. This does not include the 20% vacancy bonus he gets every time a tenant leaves because they can't afford the rent. It does not include the preferential rent increase that he gives to new tenants who don't really understand the way the system works. After one year of the renovation, my landlord managed to increase the overall rent in my building by 90%. After the second year, he's increased overall rent by 120%. These are statistics we obtained with the help of Aaron Carr from the Housing Rights Initiative, initiative, sorry. We are not making these numbers up and we are not exaggerating. This is what's happening in Brooklyn and New York City. New York City is facing a major crisis of homelessness while landlords' expenses go down and their profit goes way up. For those of you wavering about rolling back the rent, ask yourself, why does America go to the aid of other countries but refuse to deal with a major crisis and disaster right here? We need the RGB Board to stand up to write the law that's been done to tenants year after year at the hands of landlords. We, the tenants, are here today to let you know we will no longer choose between shelter and food. We demand a rent rollback. Thank you. Thank you.
The next three speakers will be Valerie Cooley, Indira Rodney, and Nesley Paul.
Mr. Paul, as well.
Okay. Valerie Cooley or Cooley? Cooley, fine, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Valerie Cooley, this is my daughter Jennifer.
Hello, good evening.
Hi.
We are tenant leaders and members of the Flatbush Tenants Coalition. On behalf of the tenants that are not able to be here this evening, we have lived at this address once in Paul's court for 38 years. I have seen the building change landlords, each one shaded and the other. Okay, we, rents have doubled and tripled, especially over the past three years. Families are doubling and tripling in small apartments to afford the ever-escalating rents. Bills are being neglected in order to keep the roof over their heads. Landlords claim operating expenses are high. Why purchase a building if you can't pay the operating expenses? How can they make such claims whenever where you look and by listening to tenants, they are creating improvements? Example, elevators, pointings, intercom, anything that's gonna create an MCI increase. Appliances are replaced by new ones. It's, the increase is attached to the rent forever. There's no, 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 nothing, no cutting off. Not to mention, all the other incentives they collect. Vacancy bonuses, eviction bonuses, preferential rent increases, subdivision of apartments. A one-bedroom becomes a two-bedroom. A two-bedroom becomes a three-bedroom. And then the rent triples. I've seen it in the building that I live in. A rent rollback, I don't know if somebody can answer me this, is it legal for them to subdivide and then rent these apartments for three or four times that it, you know, number four?
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry. I'm saying, I'm asking, is it legal for them to do this, for the subdivision? Okay. A rent rollback is an absolute necessity. An absolute necessity. Tenants need a break. Let us breathe a bit easier, be able to catch upon a few bills. We demand competent licensed contractors, not supers or maintenance workers who cut corners to save the landlord's money. The work, the work falls apart immediately after it's done. Case in point, it's me, yours truly, it's happened. We need the rollback.
Look at your... Sorry, I have to interrupt you because your time is up.
Already?
Thank you, yes, sorry. Thank you.
We wanna, we wanna end gentrification and homelessness. Roll it back.
Indira Rodney?
Yes, good evening, my name is Indira Rodney. I live in 73 Crown Street in Brooklyn. I've been living here over 20 years in the apartment and I've been harassed by the tenant, the landlord, all the time because he want the apartment, because it's four bedrooms and two bathrooms. I only paid $1,300. Every time he come to my apartment, he said to me that all the time I'm living here, he's losing $500. That means he's making life hell for me to move. I don't know where to go. I don't know where to go. I don't have enough money because all the apartments now are $24,000. And I'm tired of talking about it all the time because if the system was working, we would not be here. We would not be in that situation. All the people come, I go all over the place, talking about it. Go to the senator office, go here, go there, they tell me the same thing. Go to the legal, uh, the legal aid, blah, 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 blah. Nothing happening. And I'm sick and tired of listening and hearing the same thing. And I have the court paper now. I have to go back in July 11th with the landlord because wrath is coming up all the way to the 12th floor in my apartment. It's unbelievable. And I have to buy food. I cannot use my kitchen. I cannot use my television. We have to live in peace. We're not coming here just to say we live in America and we live back into the 12th world country. That's bologna. This is unfair and it has to be stopped. It has to stop. It has to stop. I'm tired of it. 20 years since 2009, I'm going to court with the landlord. Patch, patch, and go. Patch, patch, and go. Ceiling fall down. Battery not working. We go take a shower, no hot water, and have a child with disability in the apartment. And they tell you, the disabled children come first. And it's not true. It's only talk, and talk, and talk. The mayor talking, the president talking, whoever talking, just stop, no action. And I'm tired of it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Nesley Paul, Lou Rosero, and Paulette James. Nesley Paul?
He left.
He left? All right. Lou Rosero? All right. Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Lou Rosero. Soy una inquilina que vive en William's Brooklyn. Estoy aquí para pedirle a la Junta de Administración de Renta que este año no haya aumento de renta.
Good evening. My name is Lou Rosero, and I'm a tenant who lives in Williamsburg, Brooklyn. I'm here to request to the Rent Guidelines Board that this year, there is no raise in rents.
Yo vivo en un edificio de renta estabilizada y cada año tengo que pagar más aumento. A pesar de que mi casero no nos da servicios, a veces en el invierno no da calefacción ni agua caliente. Pero el casero viene a mi apartamento para ofrecerme dinero y para decirme que debo mudarme al Bronx. Especialmente hoy día que venía para acá. A las 2:32 de la tarde llegó una empleada del dueño de casa ofreciéndome lo mismo, que me mueve para el Bronx y si no, hagamos unos arreglos. Usted se puede imaginar, en esta época, ellos pidiéndome que yo me mueva para el Bronx, viviendo tanto año aquí en Brooklyn. Eso es imposible.
I live in a rent stabilized building, and every year I have to pay more increases, even though my landlord does not give us services and sometimes in the winter, he doesn't give us heat or hot water. But the landlord does come to my apartment to offer me buyouts or tell me that I should relocate to the Bronx. Especially today, when I was coming here at 2:32 PM, an employer, an employer from the landlord came to my apartment and said that I should relocate to the Bronx and that if I didn't, and asked me to make a deal. Can you imagine that, after living for so many years in this community in Brooklyn, to be asked to move to the Bronx? That's impossible.
No entiendo por qué el casero sigue pidiendo aumento mientras que nosotros como inquilinos no recibimos servicio. Le pido que este año no haya aumento sino reduzcan la renta. Gracias.
I don't understand why the landlords continue asking for increases while us tenants do not receive services. I am asking you for no increases this year. For you to not, for no increases this year if you do not reduce the rent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.